Figure it out. Wow, that's really touchy today, isn't it? All right, so we are going to review, go over, is this the 2018 FEMA flood projects that we're going to be completing? All right, Chief Judge, you can start.
Good evening, Council. It's nice to see everyone again. So tonight, we're here to discuss the closeout and status of the 2018 Project DR 4408, which was from the August flooding in 2018 that affected a lot of our waterways and streams and bridges and a lot of other critical infrastructure here in the city of Scranton. So we're happy to report to Council that it's now been closed out. We're in the process of completing the final paperwork, working with our partners at FEMA and Pima to do so. We've put in previously for some of the funds to be allocated to the city of Scranton, and now we're in the process of finishing the rest of that work to get reimbursed. But the important part here is that the projects are now all completed. The last project that just got completed about two weeks ago was the Elm Street wall behind the South Side Shopping Center, which in the original scope was 65 feet, and then it got expanded to about 130 feet of replacement. There were some challenges there. This is critical for the city of Scranton, and this should be applauded that this is now finished. It was a lot of hard work from a lot of partners here in the city of Scranton, working with the city engineer, our dedicated project managers, Morgan Fetzak and some people that were here and have left since then, since we started these projects. Required a lot of different extensions for a lot of different reasons, as I'm sure Council's aware. You've been tracking this right along. COVID was a big stumbling block for us. The September 2023 flooding event was a large stumbling block for us. The overhead power lines that run over the Elm Street wall that we replaced, that was a little bit of a stumbling block and required some additional engineering to be able to shore that up as they were replacing it. But I think all in all, this is a great day for the city of Scranton, that we can bring you the information and the city engineer will go through exactly, kind of, just giving you some highlights of what's been accomplished. And at the end of the day, this makes the city a safer place. And I can tell you that, you know, our Department of Public Works, between the staff down there and the flood department, the emergency coordinator down there and the DPW director, are on top of making sure that we continue to maintain these waterways, streams in our city, to make sure that when we do have rain events, you know, like the one we're getting right now, that that water can flow through the city of Scranton and, you know, can do so safely so that it's not impacting our residents. Obviously, there's going to be those events like we had in September of 2023, that, you know, that amount of rain in that short period of time, we're going to experience some issues. And I think we're better positioned now to respond to those. And I also think that a lot of the work that the mayor and, along with Council and the mayor's administration, has done to move a lot of these stormwater projects through ARPA is extremely important. And, you know, we'd be happy to talk about those at the end, but right now, we kind of just want to highlight the fact that this project is now complete. We are in the paperwork stage of it and working with our partners at Pima and FEMA to make sure that we can get those accomplished.
So just to refresh my memory, right, there's 49 projects? Was that what was involved?
So I believe there was what they call seven large projects, 52 individual scopes of work under each one of those, I believe. And the city engineer can get into it a little bit more, but I think 40 of them were completed. I think some were canceled because there was no debris by the time we got there to do the engineering. Whatever sediment had been there had been washed, so there was no scope of work to do. I believe that we also had Fish and Boat had eliminated a couple of the projects. We had easement issues with a couple. One, we had a bridge that was replaced, so no longer did we need to do the work there. And I believe there were three or four that were tied to, because of the permanent stream bank restoration being soil, that we did not do those projects. But for the most part, 40 of these, 40 out of 52 were done, and some of them just weren't completed for different reasons, but nothing that's going to adversely impact.
Okay, 40 out of 52. Can you give me, just to refresh my memory, we got extensions. So it was 2018. They needed to be completed by, what was the first one?
Yeah, so that's just kind of a project timeline and overview. So August of 2018 is when that flooding event occurred. October of 2019, we're believing that's about when the disaster declaration number was assigned. August of 2022, we put in for a time extension and project was reactivated after years of inactivity because of COVID. And under previous administration, there was a change in city engineers. The previous city engineers had done some work for, I believe, two projects, and those two projects were completed. But then there was a lot of updated engineering work that needed to be done, and they're working those project scopes with FEMA and Pima to be able to prove any change in scope was important. And then in January 2024, another time extension approval, following substantial completion of the projects. And then we recently just asked for another one that gave us a couple of weeks. They were just finishing the Elm Street wall, but that's what brings us to today and the conclusion of these projects. So the work is actually complete, and now we're doing the paperwork closeout through FEMA and Pima. And just so you're aware, represented about $5.5 million worth of work, and we're in the process of, some of that money's already been put in for what they call a drawdown, and we've gotten, some of that's been returned to the city coffers, and then we continue to, we'll continue to draw now that the project is complete and finished. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Riley.
Thank you. I'm here with our project manager, Joey Sideta, who has worked through this for the last two and a half years. And there's been a lot of detail and information that need to be gathered, and a number of different bid packages put out to bid, and then the work monitored through construction. And some of the detail that needed to be done was, many of the, just as we have to for the permanent projects, like Meadow Brook projects, the streams and the watercourses are through private property, and we need to get rights to get into those properties to access. Unless it's already a flood control project, sort of like the South Scranton levee, if it's a small stream, we had to get parcel plaits and go and get temporary or permanent easements signed at each of those properties in order to stabilize stream banks and remove debris. And that process went extremely well, and a lot of that is because of the, sort of, the personal contacts that Morgan made with each of the property owners and explaining, Morgan explained to each of the property owners what was going on, how it was going to affect their property, how it was going to benefit the stream, and we got really great cooperation across the city so that the projects could be able to get done. The number of these small streams have very erodible watersheds and very erodible upstream areas because of the types of soils there are. One example is Lindy Creek. So the state did a project to put debris basins in back 25 years ago, and those basin, that, concrete basins, with a series of two of them, got filled in by the 2018 flood. And luckily, the contractor cleared those basins out just a few weeks before the September of '23 flood, or that flood would have been even worse for more property owners in that Lindy Creek area. And then the work after the '23 flood cleaned that basin out again. And so there's a project in the works now with ARPA funding to extend the stream walls up along Frank Street and add another debris basin to keep the stream inside of its banks and prevent what happened in 2023 of where Lindy Creek ends up down Emerita Street. And that's going to be a very, very important improvement for major storms in the future. And I think, we were out in the Fawnwood area, and you could see, there was a stream there that goes through properties that was, when the development was built, was two feet deep, and now it's six feet deep because of the erodibility. And the city's ARPA project is going to put that water course in a pipe and through the properties and improve the properties. So, Morgan, if you want to show some more of the pictures of the, so the Elm Street wall, and I think, so-
Sorry, Mr. Riley, can we go back to the, along Frank Street? So that catch basin is there at Kaiser Avenue, and the picture that was up is the opposite side of Kaiser Avenue.
Did you have that picture?
Yeah, this is the opposite-
Of those basins at Frank? Do we have Frank Street picture?
How far up from this catch area is it going to extend up to Newton or Crisp, all the way up to Newton or Crisp, or some part of the way?
Not up to Crisp, but it's going to extend up above the, so what happened, so you know where the High Railroad-
The railroad, the old railroad bridge, isn't it?
Right, so upstream of the High Railroad, the stream veers away from Frank Street and heads up to where it crosses Crisp. So that, so it's going to be, there's going to be a basin in the area where the wider area above the railroad abutment, and that's going to have more capacity than those current basins down below. And then there's going to be a flood wall along Frank Street, so that where passes, where the water jumped out of the, jumped out of the creek along Frank Street, right at and downstream of the railroad abutment, this wall is going to keep it in there. And then there's a private bridge to a house that's a bottleneck, and debris is caught there, and that's going to be replaced with a structure, that structure is narrower than the rest of the stream and lower. So that will be replaced with a structure that's as wide as the stream and higher while still maintaining access to that property, so that, you know, we can confidently keep the Lindy Creek water in the creek and not on Frank Street or down Jackson Street.
And then once it hits that debris field and it hits Kaiser Avenue, it goes underneath Kaiser Avenue and it hits that channel, everything from there to, like Dewey Avenue and behind Gress, the old Gress headed towards the, you know, like the railroad tracks, that area is all clear from there on out, right? And it's still good, it's still in good condition?
Right, that's, right, that's in condition, and there was debris clean out in that area. Yeah, so it curves and goes, goes, heads south, you know, towards Taylor in the concrete channel. That's, basically Lindy has a confluence with Kaiser Creek, right before the railroad.
Yeah, so that'll be expanded a little bit, and it'll go up probably 100 yards up to the, up past that old railroad, that old railroad bridge.
Right, so the, so the kind of called creek getting out of the stream that happened before won't happen once that's built.
Thank you.
We can have Joey Sideta go through the different pictures quick, so we could show you each one of those projects quick. He could step you through those, and then Tom Riley can answer any other questions.
Tom, I just have one. The railroad bridge, the structure that's still there, the retaining wall, is that going to remain, or is that going to be taken out?
That's going to remain.
Have you seen it? It looks to me like it's falling in.
I should, I'll take another look at it.
Okay, I was up there today, and I did take pictures, so it actually looks like it's going to come down.
Yeah, we've kept an eye on it, but it's, so most of the railroad structures were built in a way that made them, you know, basically very stable.
Yeah.
Because they, what they did is, if it's, if it's 25 feet high, it's 25 feet wide at the bottom, is how they built them.
Yeah.
You know, with stone, and then it was built like a wedge. So, and then they, they would then face them with cut stone, and sometimes they would parch them. But, so sometimes you can have a situation with a well-built railroad abutment where the face of it is falling off, but the whole thing won't tip over.
Right.
But it's tall enough that we should take a look, take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, it looked like the top, it actually looked like it had another concrete poured on top of it, maybe 18, 20 inches deep. When you look at it, you'll see, it looks like it's a separate piece, but I noticed that.
Yeah, so the beams, there would have been a bridge seat, right?
Right.
And on top of the bridge seat is where the beam sat. And then behind that is what they call the back wall, which is a shorter wall that's the height of the beams and the rails, right under the rails. So if that back wall, you know, is just sort of a stub sticking up, you know-
That may be the appearance from down on the road. You can't get close, but you'll see when you look at it up there.
So any of them stone-falling, they're just ornamental, you're pretty much saying, right? They're applied at the end?
The facing.
Yeah, it's ornamental, and it's not really part of the structure.
Right, it's not, I mean, it's meant to protect it from the elements, but it's not the main, the main structure is, they call them a gravity wall, and they're built like a wedge. And, but, you know, it's a pretty simple structural theory, and they generally held up pretty well. But, I mean, anytime you have a wall that high that's next to a creek, it's worth, you know, keeping a close eye on, because then if you were to take it out, you know, there's, you know, there are some private properties built up top there, and you'd have, if you were to take it out, you'd have to lay back the slope at a much gentler slope and remove a lot of material. So the removal of it, and I think, you know, at one time, it was railroad property. Now it's part of somebody's residential lot at the top.
And now, and that wall probably protects from erosion to occur, right? So if we were to take that out, there's a chance of erosion?
Well, you'd have to armor it with big rock if you took it out and lay it back at a flatter slope. It would be a lot of material to move. But, you know, obviously, you don't want it to fall into the creek, because that would, the creek would get diverted in the wrong places.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Joey Sideta, Riley. This has been me and Morgan's baby for the past two and a half years. I know all the information, anybody knows about it, so here we go. Got some fast facts real quick. So we've removed 39,300 cubic yards of debris from the eight streams in the city of Scranton. Just for a point of reference, that's about 4,000 triaxle dump trucks full of material.
Now, before we go, sorry, the debris removal from the streams, there were several of those projects included in the 52, right? Did we get to all those debris cleanings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. There was one that PA Fish and Boat Commission, they said they didn't want that area removed because it's a good place for people to fish from. It's right by Myrtle Street Bridge, popular fishing place. They stock it with trout there. So I think that was a worthwhile omission from the project. We've also armored a bunch of stream banks with riprap. That totaled 6,270 cubic yards, or about a quarter of a mile of stream bank was stabilized. We fixed a historic retaining wall at the Scranton Iron Furnaces. That wall was like over 150 years old. It was built by the founders of the city, so I think that's pretty cool that we got to fix that. And then we talked about earlier, the big Elm Street wall was the crown jewel of the project. Took a lot of work from our structural engineering team, and, yeah, it ended up being over a million dollars just by itself, and we got that one done. And it shouldn't be a problem for as long as all of us live.
What was the second bridge?
Yeah, we did two bridges. I didn't mention the bridges. We did the Oak Street Bridge. There's a picture of it later on. That bridge was actually, the shoulder was closed due to the structural integrity of it. Once we did our repairs, we were able to open that back up to full width, so that was excellent. The other bridge we worked on was on Jackson Street over Kaiser Creek. That bridge doesn't serve very many homes, but it is still something that we were able to address, get fixed. Pretty old, but we patched it up, and it's in good shape now. So this next slide talks about all the people that we had to deal with to make this project happen. So obviously FEMA and Pima. Every project had to be reviewed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the PA Department of Environmental Protection, and the Fish and Boat Commission. So there was pretty long review time for all those, so, you know, it had to be constantly monitored and kept up with. We also had to work with, you know, a number of private and commercial property owners, including the Delaware Lackawanna Railroad. That was interesting. They required us to have flaggers out there whenever the contractors were working, Scranton Iron Furnaces, and lots more. This next slide talks about all of the project challenges that we faced. The big one was permitting. So like I said, it had to be, these projects all had to be reviewed by those three entities, the Corps, DEP, and PA Fish and Boat. We also had to deal with wild trout and bat restrictions. So for wild trout, we were only allowed to work in the stream between June 1st and October 1st. So, you know, that's not a big construction season, you know. And then to add on to that, there were also bat restrictions. So anytime we had to remove a tree, either one that FEMA told us to, or one that was, you know, in the way of building our access road down to the creek, we were not allowed to cut down any trees between May 14th and August 15th. So right when we were about to, trying to start these projects because of the trout restrictions, we had bat restrictions. So that made it a very tricky kind of plan to put into effect. So we had to deal with We already kind of talked about property access. Pretty much every project required some sort of easement, other than the ones on the Lackawanna, you know, by the levee. And then the last hurdle was just interpreting what FEMA wanted us to do. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. What they gave us was a little vague. They did give us a few pictures and a brief description of what they wanted, and then we had to interpret that and come up with a plan that, you know, conformed to all of these requirements that these agencies gave us. So that was, that was a little tricky, but we made it happen. We got 12 bids out and got all these projects completed.
And the biggest scope change was on the wall along the river, because, so the reason that the wall was compromised by the storm is because when they, when they built the flood wall in the late 50s, they, there was a meatpacking plant there, and they budded it up, they budded the wall up to the foundation, to the basement wall of the meatpacking plant. And then when the meatpacking plant was removed and the earthen levee added in another Army Corps project, they just left the old basement wall of the meatpacking plant as the flood wall, which was not at all constructed like a flood wall or like a retaining wall. You know, it was a bad idea 60-some years ago, and eventually the flood waters, you know, caused it to start leaning towards the river. But when FEMA measured it, they only, it was clearly the entire meatpacking basement wall, but they somehow only tape-measured like half of it. So then we had to, you know, give them photos and measurements and go through a process to get the scope changed, because it would have been technically infeasible and not very wise to only replace half of the wall, when it was clearly caused by this choice to leave a meatpacking plant basement wall as a flood wall.
That project's completely finished right now at this point in time?
Yeah, the contractor finished up last week.
All right.
Yep.
When it comes to the Oak Street and Jackson Street, could you just briefly describe what kind of work you did on both of those bridges there?
Too many pictures? Yeah, I think we have some pictures later on, if you want to wait for them. I'll buzz through these other couple of slides quick. So I'll just talk quickly about the project implementation. So as you know, we did 12 projects, put them out for bid, and we had six different contractors do the actual work, and Scranton DPW did a few of the projects as well. So shout out to them. And as we mentioned, we covered pretty much every major waterway in the city, Lackawanna River, Stafford Meadow Brook, Lindy Creek, Lewis Creek, Roaring Brook, Kaiser Creek, Leach Creek, and Meadow Brook. So, very good. Here's some photos of before and after of that wall we were just talking about. As you can see, there's a huge tree grown out of the middle of it in the before picture on the left. On the right, we got a brand-new concrete wall. It did not come easily. Like Chief mentioned earlier, there's overhead power lines there, so we had to design like a specialized shoring system in order to support the excavation. Contractor worked straight through the winter to get that done for us and did a great job. This next slide is about Stafford Meadow Brook. These pictures are in what I've been calling the Great, or the Grand Canyon of Scranton. So this is between Brook Street and East Locust and Pittston and Prospect, kind of behind McCarthy Flowers over there in South Side. So, yeah, it's a pretty deep ravine, and we were able to stabilize those slopes with a lot of riprap. So those slopes were very steep, very unstable. I went down there before the project and had a hard time getting back out, but now it's very stable, very nice, very good contribution to the city. We talked about Lindy Creek already. Yeah, like Tom mentioned earlier, thank God, we got it cleaned out before that September '23 flood, and we're going to continue to monitor that and clean it out as often as needed.
And that there, that just goes up just past the driving range, correct?
Oh, Lindy Creek is off of Frank Street.
Oh, okay.
Kaiser Creek wasn't, the part by the driving range, wasn't actually part of this FEMA 408 project. That was done, you know, after the September flooding because of how much debris we had at that time. Let's see, Lackawanna River, we did quite a few projects there. The one- Um, the one highlighted here is at the confluence where, uh, Leggins Creek dumps in. As you can see, there was a ton of debris built up there and a contractor removed all that, cleaned it out. We also did debris removal projects at the Hollow Ave, or, I'm on Leggins Creek, aren't I? Leggins Creek. For Leggins Creek, we did the Hollow Ave Bridge, um, Ballow Avenue or Leggins Street, Rockwell Ave Bridge, so a number of areas on Leggins Creek. The Roaring Brook, that was another one we did a lot of work on. Um, these pictures are Cedar Ave Debris Basin, similar to the Lindy Creek Debris Basin, but much bigger scale. Um, that was, that's, that was well overdue to be removed, debris removed from and, uh, we got that all taken care of. It's in great shape now. Uh, we also removed a ton of debris from Richter Ave. That's where Darcy Park is there over in, um, East Scranton by the Lululeek, uh, the Myrtle Street Bridge. Um, we did bank stabilizations in that retaining wall at the Iron Furnace property. So that was all great. Kaiser Creek, um, debris removal at the Washburn Street Bridge and along Sherman Ave. And then we also did structural repairs to the substructure of the Jackson Street Bridge. So that bridge is, um, stacked stone abutments. There were a few stones that had kind of fallen out of the abutments. The contractor, uh, put those stones back into place, grouted any other holes, um, so now it's back to being structurally sound. Leech Creek, a lot of debris there. Um, there was a big area behind Garrity's that we cleaned out, a lot of debris. I forgot the number, it was a couple hundred cubic yards. Um, and then McDonough Ave and the Oak Street Bridge. The Oak Street Bridge, like I said earlier, was, um, deemed structurally unsafe on the one shoulder. The city closed that shoulder. Once the contractor was, made these repairs, we were able to open that back up.
How, how far did you go to either side of Oak Street from the bridge?
Uh, on the Oak Street Bridge, we went upstream, I don't know the distance off the top of my head, probably about a quarter mile upstream, cleaned it all out, stabilized the banks with rip rap.
Were any trees removed in that area?
Um, I think a few were removed for access. Lot of vegetative debris, a lot of rock debris, a lot of sand, silt, mud.
And that goes up behind the houses on McDonough Ave, correct?
Yeah, and then we did another project that was separate from the FEMA project just recently, um, just below the, is it Bloom? Bloom Ave Bridge as well, a bank stabilization project.
Separate funding.
That was separate funding. But Leech Creek is in pretty good shape right now.
And was that, the funding for that, was that in 2023 funding or different source altogether?
Yeah, that was, um, funding from the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
And that also funded Kaiser Creek as well?
That was just the McDonough Ave project that we just finished up.
Okay, thank you.
Meadow Brook, um, that's another hot topic these days. So there was a good amount of debris built up at the bottom of Meadow Brook, the, the newer section. DEP inspects that every year, um, and it would get flagged, it got flagged for years because of all this debris buildup, so we were able to clean it out. As you can see, you can eat off the bottom of it now, so. Yep, it's a nine-foot pipe in that section. The contractor had to custom build, uh, a bucket for their mini excavator in order to scrape all that debris out and get it out of there, so. Oh yeah, so this, the Meadow Brook dumps into the Lackawanna River, just across the river from the DPW building, DPW headquarters, and, um, we cleaned out, I think it was the first, or like the bottom, was it 300 feet, Morgan? I think it was 300 feet of it was full of debris, we, they cleaned all that out.
It goes to the river, up, um, under, under floodwater, I think it was up, um, probably like 120 feet from the river. Next to the block company.
Underneath the block company, yeah.
Yeah, but with Meadow Brook, thank you for going out and meeting the neighbors. I think you had a lot of, uh, questions that they got answered. I know there's updates to be had with the plan. I know they're waiting on some of those and looking for some communication, so thank you for meeting with them and I think giving them, uh, some reassurance would, would go a long way.
So if you have, that's the end of the presentation. I'll just give some closing remarks after you guys have some, if you have any other questions regarding these projects.
I don't know. I, I don't think so, Chief. I think as we were going, we kind of interrupted and got what we, we wanted to know.
Yeah, so thank you guys for taking the time to, uh, go over this. I think this is an important element of what the city's involved in, especially with, uh, you know, managing our storm water that comes through the city. I, you know, people ask me, you know, why so much flooding in the city of Scranton? And it's, you know, due to the way we're kind of configured, we almost like sit in a bowl here. So we have the mountains, as everybody knows, on both sides and a lot of, uh, waterways that are traveling down through the city. And to be able to make sure that they're open and passable is an important aspect to public safety and for the people to, you know, live and work here in the city of Scranton safely and also to be able to protect their property. So, you know, getting this project to the finish line, I think was critical, but I think it also highlights some of the challenges we may have going forward. Uh, there's, as we all know, there's a lot, lot of changing going on, on the, in the federal government, there's a, we don't really know what's going to happen if we had another one of these events. We've seen disaster declarations recently turned down, not in our state, but I think it's important that, you know, we continue to maintain these, um, waterways and, and I think that the Department of Public Works is doing a great job with that. But I think going forward, whether funding comes from state entity or whether it still continues to come and flow from the federal entities if we have a large-scale disaster, I think it's important and I think Council was, you know, instrumental in helping us get a lot of these contracts through in a timely manner. But really, when these events happen, timeliness is very important. Obviously with this specific project, we had a lot of hurdles that we had to overcome, but going forward, just keeping it in the back of your mind that we need to move quickly and you just even saw with them mentioning the restrictions that we have with trouts, bats, uh, permitting through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, permitting through DEP, there's a lot that needs to be done engineering-wise, um, you know, so to be able to move contracts through Council quickly, to make sure that we're getting contractors in place that can start and perform that work is crucial. And I know, and I'd like to thank and commend Council for, you know, working with the administration to make sure that those got through in a timely manner. There was a lot that we learned through this, um, and I think we're better poised going forward to be able to deal, mitigate these incidents and, um, thank you for taking the time for letting us highlight this and like I said, we just wanted to make sure the Council had, you know, an update on where this project was and now it's just a matter of getting all the paperwork done and working with FEMA and PMA to be able to close these grants out and get, uh, the monies recouped to the city of Scranton's, uh, funding accounts. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Morgan, Tom, Jody, thank you for your information.
Can I, can I ask one, can I ask one last thing? So when it, when it comes to Meadow Brook, right, some of the updates that are going to occur, they have to be approved. Could you just explain that quickly so, so people understand? It's going to be approved through DEP and also through the state?
Yeah, so any changes that are requested through residents for any of their easements or anything like that, even if it's a plat change saying it's a garage, not a shed, anything like that does have to go to DGS, then they have to approve it. Then we would bring it back to the resident, but the approval process takes a little bit sometime, so that's kind of where we're at for some of those specific easement questions.
Yep, so right now we're waiting for that approval through them?
Through the state.
And once that occurs, we can get those updates in there.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.